Good afternoon, I'd like to open the Smithfield Town Council Committee meeting. First is public comments. We have Max Harmon. Is that correct?
I didn't know if you wanted to turn this one first.
Pardon?
I didn't know if you were going to do A first.
I can do that, yes, we had public comments at top, so. It's either what you want to be, you want to move that around, it's fine, but I only have two people signed up.
Yeah, public comments, let's show up first on.
Yeah.
Maybe it's this new agenda program we got, who knows?
Max Harmon?
Yeah, I mean, we, I'm, I'm here on the special use permit. Yeah, for COVID.
Okay, well, we can, we can do that during that, okay. Then we have Jason, same way, okay, we'll do that too then. I appreciate y'all signing up and confusing things. At this time, we have Tourism, um, Rivas List data for Stephanie. I understand she's got a forty-five minute program she's going through.
Settle in, folks. Thank you for having me. I'm Stephanie Kunsicki, I'm the Assistant Director of Tourism, and we wanted to give folks an update. We know that you all are advocates for tourism and the events that we do, that's probably what we're known for the most, but we also wanted to give an update on some other things that we do. So what we're going to talk about is a little bit about what we do that you might not know as much about, and then really, we wanted to focus on how it helps residents, so it's not just good for the town in general, but really helps the people who live here. So the first thing we'll talk about is what we do, and what folks might not think about is how we actually use data to make decisions. We have information about people who come to Smithfield in Isle of Wight County, and this pie graph here is an example of where folks are traveling to. These are people who are traveling more than fifty miles, that's the data that we collect because we consider them kind of part of tourists, and you can see, for example, that one of the big slices of pie is folks coming from Raleigh-Durham. So this was really interesting to us and interesting to the statewide organization because they're coming from out of state, and we also know that when they come to town, or when they come to Virginia, the place that they most go are Virginia Beach and Williamsburg. So that's really a great opportunity for Smithfield. So in this example, we took that knowledge from Raleigh-Durham and we crafted a campaign to go after those folks and remind them that Smithfield is a wonderful place. You can see on the left-hand side from, it's a magazine called Walter Magazine, and it targets high-end folks in that area that are really interested in travel and arts and culture. And then last meeting, you remember, there was a little baby truck coming around, and that is actually in the streets of Raleigh-Durham right now, and that's the kind of, the butt end of the truck that's driving around and talking to folks about coming here to take a trip. Another way that we target these folks is kind of riding the coattails of Williamsburg and Virginia Beach. So on the left-hand side, you can see an ad that we've run for Anvil Campground in Williamsburg. So hey, while you're in Williamsburg looking for things to do, just hop on the ferry, it's so easy to get here. And then on the right-hand side, you can see some other ads that we've run electronically where we're specifically talking to folks that are planning trips to those areas. So this would go to an email list of folks that have said they're trying to come to Williamsburg or Virginia Beach, and again, we just want to kind of encourage them to come here as part of that trip, not to take away from that trip, but to add on to it. Another way that we use data is thinking about time of year. So how do we make sure that folks are coming to Smithfield year-round? And what you can see here is kind of the trips by month over the course of the whole year, and in the red box is January, so you can see January is the lowest time that folks come to this area for tourist trips. So one of the events that we have in this time of year is Restaurant Week, and this year, we made even, an even bigger effort and a bigger marketing push behind it. On the left-hand side, those are some examples of social media, we concentrated on the different participating restaurants. In the middle, there was some signage we put up around town and we provided to the restaurants to say that they were participating, kind of a teaser ahead of time. And then on the right-hand side, you can see we go to Williamsburg Time Shares and give them information. So this is specifically concentrating on Restaurant Week and giving them information to encourage them to come here as well. We also, you probably know us best, everyone does, for the events that we actually organize. So things like the Autumn Vintage Market, the Farmer's Market, in the middle, at the bottom, you can see a mistletoe market, which is coming up soon, parades, we have a food tour, all sorts of things like that. But one of the major aspects of what we do is that we promote other folks' events too. And this is really important to us to help promote the area as a whole, so you can see the city fireworks, for example, the Juneteenth event, and some other events, the Witches' Night that just happened. But those are not technically tourism events, but we know they have big tourism impact and we want to support them. Sometimes we also support specific locations, so for example, the Fiddling Pig had the Castmark certification, and that's a big draw and something that's very unique in the area, so that's where we would amplify the efforts of a particular business. You can also see in that Juneteenth, we've talked a lot in other contexts about bundling, come for the weekend. So Juneteenth, I think it was on a Thursday, but we said, hey, spend the weekend, do other things while you're here. So really important to kind of bundle things together for the good of all of us. We also partner with local organizations, and we're going to see how this goes. We're going to show a little social media video that we put together for the Farmer's Market, the Police versus Fire.
The firefighters don't have to be out here picking up cones every day.
Man, I'm telling you, this year, we're totally going to raise more money than the fire department.
Again, is it even a question?
Not even a question, we are going to win again.
So that's just an example of how we really want to support folks locally. They raised money to fire and police with a dunk tank at the Farmer's Market. We also do linking to what people are looking for in terms of PR. So this is something where we're working all the time to get this area some public relations, listicles, clickbait online, you've all seen it, top ten things for whatever. We love to be on those lists. So these are some examples of where we were able to get this area on those lists. And also, what's happening more generally in culture. So on the left-hand side, there was a show called And Just Like That, it was a Sex in the City spinoff, and one of the main characters was supposed to be living in Smithfield. Now, it was not Smithfield, they didn't film here, but we were able to use that as a social media opportunity to talk to folks about the area. So I was on all sorts of social media sites, commenting on the characters and those kinds of things, so we could be in folks' minds, even if they had never been here before. In the middle, we work with an influencer, her name is Dinny in Virginia, and she goes around the area. We have a couple of different influencers that have done content for this area. Cassie Donegan, who's Miss America, comes from this area and actually was a performer at the Smithfield Little Theater, and so we wanted to make sure that we made a big deal out of that. And at a more local level, of course, The Bridge, amazing. Those were some of our most liked posts recently. It was great to be a part of those things. So what are the results? One of the key metrics we look at is how many folks are spending, when they come to the area, how they're spending the night. So you can see this is over time, more and more folks are taking overnight trips here, and that's great because they spend more money, they fill up the hotel beds, they eat more frequently, they go to more events. So you can see about seventy-eight percent of folks now that are coming to this area are at least spending one night, that's really exciting. And then we have a couple other statistics. So remember, we talked about targeting Raleigh-Durham. Trips from that area are up forty-two percent versus this time a year ago. January, which we targeted with Restaurant Week, we were up seven points in 2025, and now January is actually more visited than February in the area because of the work with Restaurant Week, among other things. Our interactions on Facebook in the past year are up twenty-three percent, so this is a really nice way to have dialogue with folks, not just push content, but really have a dialogue, answer questions. And you can see that we have twenty-eight thousand social media followers. This is across Facebook and Instagram, which is a ton considering how many people even live in this area. About a third of them are in Smithfield and Isle of Wight, and so that means two-thirds of them are outside of the area, and that is up almost ten percent versus year ago. And this is an example of our top post, and the thing about social media is you never really know what's going to be the most popular, it's so strange, it's kind of a, you know, throwing spaghetti against the wall. But this is an example of a post we did for businesses in Windsor, actually, so Reds and Fizz Fusion, which are two relatively new businesses, and folks were really excited about it. And you can see, we also bundled it in the message of things are happening in Windsor. Yes, these two businesses, but really, it's more broad than that, and we had a hundred and fourteen views on that. And again, if you think of how many people live in the area, that's a, that's a lot of folks, so that was great. But most importantly, how does it help residents? We really want to focus on that in just the next few minutes, because folks might think, oh, well, it's great that, you know, tourists are all around, but they clog up the roads and they fill up the dinner reservations. So how does it really help residents? So the first graph here just talks about the pie, talks about where we get our funding in the marketing team at Tourism. So you can see that the town only accounts for about a quarter of the dollars of our budget. So we get our funding from a couple different other places, the county kicks in some money, but you can see those state grants, that green piece of pie represents a pretty good chunk of our budget, and those are things that we are proactively writing grants for, and then the state is giving us money. And then you can see some private money, so this is where we have like corporate sponsorships for events and things like that. We know that total visitor spender, spending is over eighty million dollars, and again, how does that benefit residents? It's almost three million dollars of taxes that these folks are paying, and these are not state taxes, but these are counties and town, town taxes. And then lastly, this, this shows what our real estate taxes are. So this is information that we, that we got from the government agencies, and you can see that our taxes are relatively, our real estate taxes are relatively low compared to some of the other places around us. So we know that that two-point-eight million dollars that visitors are paying in their local taxes are immediately going to offset taxes that would have to be raised otherwise. So in conclusion, it's really about improving quality of life for residents. So many places are funded partially with the taxes that the, that the visitors are bringing in. We have way more events than we'd ever be able to support if we didn't have all those tourists coming in, and we really all benefit. And I would say, I moved here from Chicago just a couple years ago, and I was skeptical about the amount of events and the amount of amenities that a small town can provide, and Smithfield is really best in class, and it has rivaled other places that I've lived that are far bigger, and partially, it's due to tourism, and I'm really proud to be a part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, that was mighty, mighty nice presentation.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I say something? I just want to kudos to Tourism. I know you guys really, it seems like especially lately, have had a lot going on, only because I've been doing a lot of the stuff that you guys are doing, and I would say, it's been great. I mean, fun, it's great to see all the people, it does, yes, it brings people in, but it's fun for people that live here, and hats off to you guys because I know you really work hard and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
We appreciate you all at all the events when we see you. It's wonderful to have that kind of support. Thank you.
Thank you again. Much appreciated. At this time, we have Public Safety Committee, Mr. Bowman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee comprised of myself, Vice Mayor Harris, and Councilwoman Bibermeyer. First item on the agenda is the operational update from Police Department, September 2025. Chief Alonzo Howe, chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, and the rest of council. You'll have our activity packet in your packet, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions concerning the information that has been provided. In the form of operational updates, we don't have much, just some FYI. The homecoming parade that, that occurred on the tenth went down Main Street before the bridge opened, and it was a huge success, no major traffic issues, so we're happy about that. That is a result of working with the high school and, and others that were involved. Just Saturday night, I attended the Top Cop Dinner in the City of Suffolk, that was a very nice event, so that was very nice. And the, the last thing was the softball game. If you have not heard, and I'm going to steal this phrase if I may, Smithfield Police Department is the best in the class when it comes to, when it comes to the softball game between Police Department and the Fire Department. The Police Department was victorious again this year, and I do that in, in fun, I have the utmost respect for the Police Department, even after the game, they were still willing to take a photo with us. So it's all in fun, but it, it was a very nice event, it was very well-supported, and we're looking forward to being victorious again. Thank you.
Any questions? Just one.
Yes, sir.
Y'all just decide you don't want to play the rescue squad?
They don't want to lose.
Well, here's what it is.
Please tell.
Here's what it is, we need the rescue squad on standby for the Fire Department. So therefore, that's why we have not chosen to play the, the rescue squad.
Um, we've got mutual aid agreements, we'll probably get Carrollton to come up this way or something, you know, to try to work it out or something? Let me, a round robin type deal or something?
Double O D.
I'm open to suggestions.
Well, that is one. Why don't you get with him, and y'all figure how this is going to work out, how's that sound? Mayor, is that all right with you?
Sounds good to me. Yeah, we can have a double round, yeah.
If I may say this, we didn't do it to you, but.
Remember my full time job?
Any questions of the chief? Chief, thanks, any questions? Chief Howe? Thank you, Honorable Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next we have is operational updates, and we're going to have a joint update between Smithfield Fire Department, Isle of Wight Volunteer Rescue Squad, with Jeff Smith and Brian Carroll. Gentlemen, good afternoon.
I'll let you go first, Jim. Operational update for Smithfield Fire Department, we had eighty-seven calls in August, seventy-eight in September, we had eight work construction fire in the last two months, two of them are first due, one was at the golf course and went off the Smithfield Boulevard. Also, we are supporting Halloween Night Out, we will be doing trick-or-treating again like the twentieth year in downtown area. And we have, we've had right many extrication accidents we had in the last month, too. Any questions I can ask? Anthony, you up?
Any questions of Chief Smith? Chief, I know y'all are busy, I, I hear you every time you go out, so I know, I know how busy y'all stay, really do appreciate it. Chief Carroll?
I'll start on a lighter note.
All right.
They sucker me into getting in the Dunkin' booth, but that helps you, that raises a lot of money.
I can't imagine why, but anyway.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if you would indulge me just a few minutes through the council and the committee, there's been some recent discussion lately about who does what in the fire EMS, going into county, and I'm here to tell you that none of that discussion really matters. The fact is that we built the system and do what at the end of the day, as long as the job gets done, is not an element to a discussion, in my opinion, as a chief. So I wanted to give you a few, I wanted to take a few minutes and give you the background of how we got to where we are in public safety, and especially EMS. And it started, and I'm going to date myself, and probably suppose.
You're dating me too, probably.
Colonel Harris. But, but it started at the roundtable, like all discussions in small communities should start, with Colonel Harris as the town manager, myself as the EMS chief, Buddy Jones as the fire chief, and John Edwards as the editor of the table, and that's where it started at. It started right here on Church Street, after hours and hours and nights and nights of how we're going to provide public safety and service to the county, to the town, for the most economical amount of money. And what came out of that was, and, and many, many, many public safety meetings, was we decided that we were going to provide a ninety-second response out the door ninety percent of the time. And our call volume was low at that point, but as volunteers, we couldn't staff ambulances and get them out the door in what I consider to be timely. Now, what we can control in the county is we can't control areas geographically. You can't get to my house at Mill's Whompan, seven minutes, and you're never going to get there, and we can't afford to pay the tax to get there today or tomorrow for probably ten years down the road in seven minutes. Yet, yet some, you exclude some of that at some point when you move out of the county. I mean, we just, you can't build a fire station every seven miles in Isle of Wight County, like you can in the City of Suffolk, or City of Norfolk, or City of Kingsley. We're a county of forty-one or forty-two thousand people. But what we can do, what we decided we could do, is we could get ambulances out the door in ninety seconds, and we would staff to that level. So we started, and, and fire trucks too, with two part-time guys, or gals, at Smithfield, two in Isle of Wight Rescue and one at Smithfield Fire. Partly funded by the town, it was sixty thousand dollars by the county and thirty thousand dollars by the town, it's been a long time ago, but that's how it started. And we built this system together with the town and county by continuing to meet that goal and bringing and onboarding people as the system grew and as call volume grew. At that time, I would say our call volume was countywide, maybe two thousand calls a year. We're north of six thousand calls today.
Is that, is that combined fire and rescue?
That's total EMS calls.
Total EMS.
EMS calls and fire trucks.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to speak more from, pardon me, but I'm speaking more from the EMS side.
Okay.
Way beyond what we can do as volunteers, but it's not beyond what we can do as citizens and as a system. And there's, the importance of it is, there's no difference in a volunteer and a career provider. We, what we have built in this system is a system that's built on precepting and education and ensure that every provider does the same no matter what, and that that ambulance gets out the door in that ninety seconds, and we do it very well, and we do it very economically to the citizens of the town and county. So what does, what do the volunteers bring to the system? Well, I'll tell you what I bring, I bring thirty-eight years of institutional knowledge, and I've been here, I'm not going to tell you how old I've been, I've been here all my life, and I'm going to be here, I've been through eight paid chiefs, and I'll probably see number nine, nothing against the one we have, he's a great guy, he does a good job, but I'm committed to this community, and I'm going to be here at the end of the day, if nothing happens to me. We bring the same level of professionalism and response that you get on the career side. We work together with, with the career staff to provide training in the county, we teach EMT classes twice a year, and what our EMT classes do, to me, that's the most remarkable thing that we do out of everything we do. We feed the system. We, we make nurses, we make PAs, we, we make doctors, you know, I'll use the best example in the room today, two examples. There've been three ENAs, emergency nurses, in the top twenty under forty in Virginia. Two of those three came out of Isle of Wight Rescue Squad, one of them this past year. So that says a lot. When I started the squad, there was a young guy who was a lieutenant in the squad, I believe, that went on to work as a commissioner in the state under a couple different governors who sits across the table from me today, and I firmly believe his son is going to be our next doctor coming out of the rescue squad because he will go to medical school, and he will go, he will do great things. And that's what we do, we feed the system and we feed it every day, whether we hire them, whether we, whether we send them on to go to better things in life, we feed the system every day. We do the maintenance, I'm here to tell you, if you ran, if you ran a paid system, when an ambulance went down or a fire truck went down, you would go to Fleet and you would get the crappy truck in the city, and you'd move all your equipment over, and you'd get it and ride until somebody told you it was ready. Not here, because some volunteer or somebody comes up and fixes that truck and puts it back in service. And we have the best of the best equipment in the region when it comes to ambulances and fire trucks, in, in my opinion. Chief?
I agree.
So outside of those things, the financial support and the other things we do, they're all big parts of, of the system. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, I didn't really give you an operational update. The one thing I do want to hit on operationally is, we continue to work closely with Riverside as they begin to open, and that opens on January the sixth, and the one thing I do need the citizens to understand, and I need the support of staffs and council and the board, is that when Riverside Smithfield opens, January the sixth, if that was anything, we, we believe that that facility will be capable of handling ninety-five percent of our transport volume, and we understand that a lot of folks go to Centerra, and they go to Careplex, and they go to OB C, but we, we cannot justify bypassing that facility come January sixth to take an ambulance twenty miles further down the road for a patient. If you're in an ambulance for an emergency reason, you need to go to that, and, and that facility can handle the care, you will go to that facility. And I'm sure we're going to have some discussions on seeing, and I'm sure officers are going to have to get, oh, EMS and fire officers are going to have to get involved to explain and educate patients as to why we no longer go, because currently, there's not five minutes difference in all the facilities, they're all too far away. We, we go to Maryview, we go to Careplex, and we go to Bell Harbor, and we go to Harwood View, and we go to Long Island, and we go to KD, and we go to Riverside, and we go to Maryland. Come January sixth, we won't be doing that anymore, we're going to Riverside Smithfield. And we have a very good plan in place, we're constantly working on a plan as to what they will and won't receive and what their abilities will be internally, and we, we believe that probably ninety-five percent of our patients will, will go there. Our number one focus will be continuity of care. We want to make sure when they get in that, get out of that ambulance at that facility, that Riverside Smithfield can handle the continuity of care. And if they can't, and if, and if we happen to stop there for something that's beyond that, that, that the docs say we can't, then we'll go on, you know, we'll, we'll continue, we, we won't dump a patient so they can call transfer in five minutes, we'll, we'll make a decision and we'll go to a different facility. But come January sixth, Riverside Smithfield will be our transport facility. Comes very preaching this lately around the squad, and around other places, and I saw this on our church sign not too long ago, so I thought it was a good way to end my, my conversation, Dean, simply said, the sign on the church simply said, count your blessings and not your problems, and if your problems outweigh your blessings, count again because you probably missed something you were overlooking.
I took a grain.
So that's my.
That's your story and you're sticking to it. Questions for Chief Carroll? Chief, it used to be that if you could take someone to the medical facility that could handle it, you weren't by virtue of regulation allowed to bypass that facility, that's still...
That is still, that is still the situation.
Well, it seems to me that's the, all the grounds that you need at this juncture to stop there unless you go to check number two where they cannot handle that, and I know from talking to, to the chair over there over the Riverside Committee and, and the president of, of the hospital, there, there will be some phasing in as far as certain specialties are concerned, but to your point, it sounds to me like they're going to be up, ready to roll on January the sixth, is what I'm picking up. Madam Councilwoman Cofer, you want to address or, a butler, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The hospital has been issued its certificate of occupancy. It will actually be ready before January.
Can you put the mic in front of you? Because, yeah.
It will really be ready before January sixth, but because of all the things behind the scenes, the opening will occur on January sixth, and so we're excited about that. And I am very proud of the relationship with Riverside, the project manager, and working with Brian Carroll and the Rescue Squad, because they had a lot of input in what they felt like was strategic for the ER area.
Further questions? We do know by virtue of the... We do know by virtue of the tours that we have taken, everybody else I think has taken it, that although this may not be the largest hospital, this will be a state-of-the-art hospital where they have taken everything that they have learned from the other hospitals that have been built and integrated into this hospital to make sure that it's pretty seamless. I do have one question that's come up to me. There, and correct me if I'm wrong with my misunderstanding, but it's come to my attention that we're talking about volunteers, we're talking about paid staff. We also have volunteers that we've discussed that are also paid staff, but a decision has been made, and I'm not sure exactly by whom or what the rationale is, and maybe H R could help me, whatever, but anyway, but if you're a volunteer at the Alawite Volunteer Rescue Squad, and there is a shift open at Alawite Volunteer Rescue Squad, you cannot work that shift at Alawite Volunteer Rescue Squad because you're a volunteer there? Am I getting that correct?
If you're a career provider or officer.
Yes.
So what Mr. Carroll...
Or even a part-time.
Correct. What Mr. Chairman Bowman's saying, the county stance, and I disagree with this because it's gone all around us. Carrotuck in North Carolina is a very good example of how to do things, in my opinion. We feed the system, right? So we educate people, everybody's trained the same, young provider, older provider, go out in a pod and work in the county. They got to do one of two things. If they get hired, the way the current county interpretation is, if they get hired and they volunteer in a station, they're not allowed to work in that station. So they're prohibited from picking up a shift for pay at the station they're assigned to. I disagree with this. Every time we change attorneys, we get a different opinion on it. It doesn't seem fair to me. It doesn't seem fair to the employee, it doesn't seem fair to the citizen when there's somebody available to work a shift and they can't come in and do it because it happens to be at the same system, they want to volunteer, they're time in, and most time these people live in the county, right? So I think that's something that should be considered and looked into. And I believe it's a, I think in my years of experience, it's a decision that's made by council and not by H R, but I can't tell you that. I can tell you it's worth looking into because we do try to hire those folks. I mean, how do you not hire them? They come in and apply, they're good enough to volunteer, you know, so they're obviously good enough to work, and then you hire one of your best volunteers, and they no longer can volunteer for you. Or they got to work a shift at different stations, or we got to rearrange things. It's a very unfair system.
Mr. Mayor, you, I mean, go ahead.
I have a question. Is that something that, is that council, or is that Board of Supervisors, or what?
Well, it's county, well, they're county employees, so it's county. It's truly a county issue, but it's really a citizen issue, right?
Sure.
You know, it's, you know, I didn't say this earlier, but we're a county of 41,000 people, 31,000 people live in the North End. So the population of Smithfield and Carrollton, and that's our service district, there are six medic staffs in the county, two at Alawite Rescue, three at Alawite Rescue, one in Carrollton, one in Windsor, and one in Carson. So currently, if I have a volunteer that gets hired, they can't work out of my station anymore, or they got to quit volunteering. So either way, you lose. It's a terrible interpretation.
And other places do it differently than that.
Carrotuck actually encourages their part-time, full-time staff to come back and work events. Now, they supplement them, but they encourage them. I mean, that's how they have economically done their system so well for so long. If, this is not the case, but if Jeff was a paid firefighter, and he was off duty, he could come back and work a fire, and the incident happened, he would just come back to duty and get paid for it.
It just doesn't make any sense to me to incentivize, in order for you to work an occupation, that you have to give up your volunteer status at a rescue squad where you likely got your E M T certification. Makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Or the fire station, it works at both places.
Or fires. It doesn't make any sense. Mr. Mayor, if I might, as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, maybe draft a letter for you to review, for you to review, and maybe you can communicate with County Administrator Robertson. I'd like to know the answer to the question, because I've pondered it, and I don't understand whether it's a Fair Labor Standards Act, whether it's just an arbitrary, I don't understand it, and I'd like to understand it. There might be, there may be a good reason, I just don't know. But I understand that that decision has gone from one decision to the other to the other depending on who's making the decision. I'd like to know why a volunteer who lives in Smithfield must go to Windsor to work a paid shift when there is a paid open, or paid shift to be had at Alawite Volunteer Rescue Squad, when that person may very well know this area and know the people very much better down here where they live and grew up and got their training. I don't understand it.
It's like what Mr. Carroll said, it seems to change every time a new attorney comes in, so.
No, I'd like to draft a letter, if I could, for you, and then, if it pleased the council, just to ask the question and get some more details and figure out what's going on, because I...
I think it's definitely worth pursuing, for sure.
Further, anything further, gentlemen?
Chairman Bowman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did the Board of Supervisors explain why that is the case?
I don't think anybody's really explained it, Mr. Cutler. It's starting with F L S A. The original ruling was that you couldn't work or volunteer in the same county. I could almost live with that one better than what we're doing now. It seems like this is inequitable to everybody. You know, if it was just cut dry, you couldn't volunteer and work in the same county, it is what it is, but to literally say you can work and volunteer in the same county but not at the same station, seems to have no merit, could, in my opinion, but I'm way underpaid for it.
And then, how frequently or how many times has that policy changed in your tenure? And when was the last time?
Well, it's changed at least three, and probably at the last change is under the attorney.
So previous to that, you could do the situation you're describing?
You couldn't work, we've been, we've been both ways. You couldn't, you start off you couldn't, then you could, and then you couldn't, and now you can again.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So maybe four times, but I think we're back.
Any further questions? Gentlemen, thank you all you do for the county, we really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And if there are further questions, that ends the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we have Water and Sewer Committee, which has been canceled due to the lack of items, and then we'll move to the Finance Committee, Mr. Brooks.
Yes, sir. I'd like to open the Finance Committee along with Councilman Harrison and Councilwoman Butler. First on our agenda is an update from Laura Ross with our September financial updates.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Chairman Brooks, thank you so much. I'm going to go over 10 charts, graphs, and a couple of financial statements in this presentation. I'm going to list them for you. The first one will be the September 2025 year-to-date general fund revenues compared to budget. The second one is September 2025 year-to-date general fund operating expenses compared to budget. Then revenue to expense fiscal year 2425 as a percentage of budget. Usable funds September 25. This replaces that cash balances report and also includes designated funds on this sheet. Then I did a graph that shows what I call the checkbook, which you can see what funds are spent and where they are in relation to the checkbook. Also, the debt of, at the end of September, the investment benchmark report, and I've added a page this year that compares to prior year. I've looked at some other localities, and they show how their portfolios have changed year to year compared to several benchmarks, and we'll go over that in a minute. The investment compliance report, returns year over year, and I included a page of the financial statement overview. Now, if you have any questions that the financial statements do not answer, nor the graphs answer, please feel free to reach out and contact me, and I'll get some clarification for you. Is that good? All right. Now, the one that you see up here is the September 2025 year-to-date general fund revenues compared to budget. The red graph, excuse me, the red bar is the budget, the green, even though very small, is where we are year-to-date, okay? So if you want to look at the detail on any of this information, it is on pages three through five in your financial statements. We'll talk about revenue breakdown really quick. Real property taxes, $89,916. As you will know, very little is from real estate because we will not bill again until 6/5, so we've got a time for that. We are getting ready to bill personal property, and that will go out within the next week. We've had a lot of issues with the file. What happens is that, as you've probably heard me complain about, excuse me, talk about before, is it comes over from the Alawite. We have to take it and do some I T magic to it and bring it into the Bright system. Bright has lost a lot of staff. And we used to have one person that we would go to that could manipulate the data and get it to what we want it to be, because it has to then be brought into Bright to produce the file that we send off to be, for the, excuse me, the bills to be printed. First time it came through, there were duplicates, which had to be stripped off and redone that way. File was corrupted, file was messed up. So finally, we've got it into a format that we like, and we're in the process right now of going through it manually to make sure that it's correct. And there are a lot of folks that are billed on that, so it's going to take a while. We hope to finish that up by tomorrow. Staff's going through that right now. I'll go through the bottom of the list, and we'll talk about all the revenue because that's the best part. So as you will note, other local taxes is our largest percentage of what we have collected year-to-date. The local taxes include meals taxes, again, it's on pages three through five, meals tax, and that is, 306 comes from meals tax. Smithfield Station provides a significant part of this, as well as McDonald's. And if anybody wants to see information regarding who's paying what, which one of our 54 restaurants produces what type of revenue, I'll be happy to share that with you. Occasionally, we'll run across one, Pizza Hut in general in particular, where we've had to encourage them to please pay their taxes, but for the most part, everybody will pay and are compliant, and some do pay monthly and some do pay quarterly. Let's see. As we've discussed sales tax before, there's a slight lag, but we did receive some money recently, and you'll see that noted in your report as well, the sales tax, $56,047. Alawite sends us a report on what they're going to send to us, so if you want to see that as well, I can provide that. Let's see, we'll talk about revenue from use of money and property. $297,946, of which $207,000 is general fund interest. Now, if we look over at the miscellaneous one, that is $149,501, which a part of that is that $60,000 from Smithfield Rec. I think we got the check last month. Any questions on that? Too late? Okay.
Laura, can I pause you real quickly?
Sure.
I just want to point out, I have the privilege of meeting with Laura at least once a month in her office, sometimes more than that. But one thing that I wanted to point out on these graphs, keep in mind what we're seeing here, it looks very skewed. This is only three months of data compared to the budget, so our real revenue hasn't even started to come in yet with the real estate and personal property taxes, and that's just, I know that the graphs do look kind of funny. Just kind of keep that in mind as you look at these.
Thank you. That's quite true. We'll start to see a lot of those spike up, hopefully, since the personal property's due on the 5th of December, that's, we'll start to see that money come in as soon as we send out the bills. A lot of folks are going about sending that in. Okay, so let's go talk about the next chart, which is general funding operating expenses compared to budget. This will give you an idea, and again, it's on the pages that list the budget information behind that, the individual departments. But you can see, if you look at page one, excuse me, page two in your packet, it will show exactly the expenditures compared to budget that are listed in this chart right here. Very self-explanatory. So total expenses are $3,410, or 22.73% of budget. The largest, of course, expenses for the month of August and September always are service contracts and some capital expenditures. That's one. Any more questions on that one? No? There we go. Okay. This very next one, that is revenue and expense compared as a percent of budget graph. So that one, if you look, it's so tiny. Over there, it shows percentages of where we are, the expenditures to the revenue, and after October, I did put real numbers in for October, but going out further till the end of the fiscal year, those are based on the forecast that I've been done, I've been doing year over year, and obviously, it's an estimate of what it will be, but we pretty much stick to what it's supposed to be throughout the rest of the period. Adjustments, of course, to be made later. Okay. Now, the big one, the one I've changed. Doesn't look like it's changed that much, does it? This is the new one that I've called usable, it shows the usable funds that we have, and that was formerly the cash balances. But I thought it important to separate out the funds that we actually can use, and if you'll see that that is usable balances, at the very bottom of that is $22,763. Now, that doesn't mean we go out and spend everything right this minute. We still have budget accounted for all of those items, but we have that money should we need it.
$22 million.
$22 million, yeah. And 33 cents, so oh three cents. There you go. Any questions on that? Let's see, we're going to go to the next one, that is called the checkbook balances. I just like to show that graphically, where we were month over month. And I've separated out by the individual funds that we have in there, general fund, utilities, operating highway, investments, general fund, and investments utilities. So that just kind of shows where we can do some of that if we need to. Down below are the designated balances, and those are ones that we cannot spend that have been appropriated just for the utilities. And the purple one is the general fund, which is good, that's the highest amount for that. Now, let's talk a little bit about debt. And we go to the next page. The prime rate changed slightly and may change again, and that not only affects some of the debt that we have, but it also impacts our investments. I did a rate, I did an estimate of what I think the rates might be, and I'll provide that to you all later to show you kind of where I think we'll do it. Now, it's not set in stone because things change, and I don't have a crystal ball, but what I think it will look like hopefully by the year end. Debt right now total is $3.3 million, and I did not reflect the Series 20A-1 because that won't be paid off until October 1st. Next month, you won't see that, so we'll reduce it just a little bit. But on this sheet, you'll see that it's $233,000. Okay, everybody? We'll talk about our investment benchmark report. Just like the cash balances or checkbook that I shared with you earlier, I've changed this around a little bit, because before I had put in what the bank accounts were earning, and of course, they don't earn anything, I think it's .01 or .1, something insignificant like that. So I put just the investment that we have at the top. So at the end of September, we had $22,835,000 invested, and of that, our earnings rate changed. Of course, the old point bank, the rates are just slightly small, but given the fact that they're merging with Town Bank, maybe we can encourage them to increase that rate just a little bit. Our overall earnings rate is 4.13. The return that we had for the month of just September was $84,000. Year-to-date, July through September is $254,000. Down below, I show the individual balances for just the types of funds, like with the utilities and for the general fund, and that's the bottom part of that. Talk very briefly about the new one that I included. It sort of shows a little bit about where we're going, or hopefully, not where we're going, I think things are going to start to decline. Total portfolio that we have is 4.13. We bench against the 90-day T bill. I also included the one-year T bill, just to take a look at it, because I'm always being talked to by the banks about doing T bills, but I have to think about that. And then the V I P stable fund, which is just the fund that we have with V I P. One year ago, if you look at the very top one, our overall portfolio was earning 5.14. That's almost a point less, and that's just to do with the market, how those are changing, how the rate... And that's just to do with the market, how those are changing, how the rates have changed over that period of time. But if you also look at the 90-day T bill, it's decreased as well, as has the stable NAV liquidity, which is the VIP fund. I hope that stabilizes so that we don't have to see a decrease. It might though, I'm kind of thinking it might get down to 3.5, but yeah, we'll just watch. The next chart is our compliance report to show that of all our investments, we are in compliance with what we set in our investment policy. Right there. Little tiny print again, I'm going to re-dice that so you can see it just a little bit better. Let's see. I wanted to show as well, on the very next one, it is a report of returns year-to-date. And I'm going to continue doing that, and I may condense it just a little bit, but year-to-date, as I mentioned, we have earned $254,000. Last year was $1 million, and the year before that was 402. So hopefully, we'll be able to get another million this year. All right? And the very last one is just an overview of the very, of the second page that you have in your packet, that just is the revenue compared to expenses. Once this meeting's over and I'm able to get onto the website, I'm going to put that out there, and I will continue doing that each month so that the citizens of the town can look at it should they want to do that. If they don't want to have to go all the way through and look at what we presented during the meetings, because they can look at the, what do you call it, the agenda, but I want to put it on my website as well. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one?
Sir.
Laura, thank you for the very detailed composite report. Where are we on the delinquent tax collections that we were discussing a couple months ago?
Seventy-five thousand year-to-date, right now. But because we're going to send out, when we send out the personal property bill as well, it will include those on there because we include delinquent with that, but we may have more folks that are on that list if they don't pay their personal property by, let's say, middle of January, towards the end of January.
How about the big real estate ones we were talking about that hadn't paid in a while? Are we moving toward legal action or whatever we need to do to collect that money?
We are. Some have been able to pay their bills as well.
I'm sorry?
Some have paid.
Okay.
The bigger one that we were talking about.
When you go to sell their house, they'd usually do the property, they will pay.
They certainly will.
And then, do you have to do that, unfortunately?
You really do, and some, when we send out, we send out what's called, we don't do it. Virginia Auctions takes over to their house or their business or whatever and gives them what's called a distrust warrant. They have a period of time to pay that. If they don't pay that, that's when the booting goes. Now, we have not done that yet, we haven't done the booting yet, but that'll occur in January.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. The file is just hard to work with, but we'll get it there.
Any further questions? All right. Hearing done, I will move on to invoices. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
We have five invoices in excess of $20,000 requiring council authorization. First one, RDA Systems for software, $41,750. Second, Virginia Control and Electrical Pump Station over at Cypress Creek, $51,506.27. Third one, same company, pump control over at Plaza Pump Station, $67,322.88. Again, Virginia Control and Electrical for Pump Station over at Mallory Farm, $26,800 even. And then lastly, Isle of Wight County for IT services for the second half of 2025 for Questions?
Councilman Brooks, I have a question. Roman numeral for Mallory Farm Pump Station, wasn't, that was a, the pump stations there, were they installed by the home builder, and this is a repair already, or is this?
No, this is an invoice for the SCADA installation for our alarm system on the pump station. The developer actually paid us the money for it, but now, we're actually paying the company that completed the work.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Anything further? All right, we'll send it on for approval, and that concludes Finance Committee.
Parks and Recreation Committee has been canceled, along with Public Works Committee has been canceled due to lack of items. At this time, we have Public Buildings and Welfare, Ms. Butler?
I'd like to open up the Public Buildings and Welfare Committee with myself and Vice Mayor Harris and Councilman Darren Cutler. We have three pre-public hearing discussions, and the first one is a special use permit, 1812 South Church Street.
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. The applicant is seeking an SUP under Article 3I-C6. This would be for a commercial recreation facility. They would be offering jujitsu. The facility is designed as a membership-based program focused on veterans, law enforcement officers, other survivors, and at-risk youth. The curriculum is educational and rooted in resiliency building. It will provide structured instruction, team-based learning, and weekly peer discussions. This would be in order to provide a trusted environment to process trauma while developing practical skills. They will have approximately two employees and will be open on the evenings, Monday through Thursday, early mornings, Monday and Wednesday, and Saturday mornings. This would bring an additional business into town. However, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP. The Planning Commission did favorably recommend this application to Town Council. Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussion about this particular pre-public hearing?
Is this the one that we had the chairman here talk about, or is that different?
This is the one for, yeah, this is, that's not the same one. Being there are no further discussions about it, we'll move this on to Town Council for our next Town Council meeting as a public hearing. B is a pre-public hearing discussion, special use permit, 1282 Smithfield Plaza.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking an SUP under Article 3JC17. This would be for a service station within the existing parking lot of the Kroger. There will be five pumps and feature an eight-by-22-foot kiosk for the attendant. The fuel center will operate from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily. This was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission to Town Council. Thank you.
Is this?
The applicants are here, yes.
You want to come forward and say anything on behalf of your project?
Excuse me?
Do you want to come forward and say anything on behalf of your project?
Sure.
Good evening, Council. My name's Max Harmon, I'm the real estate manager for Kroger. I'm here with Jason. And we're happy to help answer any questions or concerns about the fuel center project.
I know that when this project was presented, we had a lot of discussions centered around it, even at our last Town Council meeting, as well as our Planning Commission meeting. Are there any questions or discussions from the owners? Darren?
Yes, Councilman Butler, I have a question. I think I asked at the Planning Commission, maybe more than once, of you and another gas station that's coming in regarding EV chargers coming into there. I had a few comments from some citizens about that. I want to say that I traveled to the VML Conference in Roanoke. I drive an EV, but I charge at home, so it's not something that would serve me. But I stopped on that conference for, to charge and get lunch in a small town. And then I recently traveled to Jacksonville, just, I just returned, and I stopped multiple locations, small towns or cities. I stopped in Savannah, but I detoured from my route to a charger specifically into a town so that I could explore the town while I was charging. So I see this as a mechanism, there's no charging station between Hampton Roads and Richmond on 460 or any of the routes, any of the country routes that transit between the metropolitan area to the south of us and to the north of us. So there's a desert of chargers in between. And if, as you saw probably from the intro, from our wonderful marketing tourism folks, that it helps us offset our taxes. We have one charging opportunity in the town that's at the Smithfield Station, it's often blocked, and it's not a, it's not a pay-per-use station like a supercharger would be. So again, I would just like to request or recommend that you explore options to get an EV charging solution in there for our residents, please.
We can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Any more discussions? I do have a question, Tammy, and it might be out of line here because this is a zoning permit request. Is there a recommendation from planning? Would there, would a recommendation come from planning?
No, the positives of the application, it would just bring another fueling center. You know, previously, there was the Farm Fresh Fueling Center in that location.
Oh, okay. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that you all have shared with us before that the electrical service areas would not be part of SHEETS. That's something that you actually offer through a vendor that you work with.
For EV charging?
Uh-huh.
That is correct. So we don't actually provide the infrastructure, we can help facilitate that through some of our partnerships with third parties, but we don't actually provide the infrastructure for our branding.
And Darren, I'm sure that once EV vehicles are more popular, I'm sure that those stations are going to be, they probably won't be the deserts that you currently, you know, recommend now. I know even at Patrick Henry Mall, they seem like a lot of them to me on the backside of the mall, and I can imagine that they will become more popular in all areas.
Well, I pulled some data and I've asked the marketing folks or the tourism folks to do the same as well, but EVs are 25% of global vehicle sales, 7.5% in the United States. Model Y is 50% of EV sales, and it sells predominantly to the 50 and above age group. So many of our tourists that journey around and venture into small towns are already buying those vehicles. And my push for it specifically is to beat the other towns in between us that would, that would get tourists into our town because tourists will drive to somewhere where they can charge their car, explore, and then drive home. So we do, we do need a station in Smithfield now, now, not in the future. I mean, I agree, as they, as they grow, we, I have seen them grow as well, and as I traveled through the south to Jacksonville, they were, they were much more prominent the further south you got. But there was no, no problem charging on the interstate. What I'm talking about is a rural solution that many people like to take the rural route, say, between Richmond and Norfolk, or explore in the rural area where we live in Isle of Wight, and this would give another tool that we have to, for our tourists to come to town.
I got a question. You mentioned something about the charging stations down at the Smithfield Station?
Yes, ma'am.
About a difference?
Yes, ma'am, the, so those are what's called a destination charger, so they're really intended for someone who is coming to that specific business.
Oh, okay.
It's not really intended for someone, although they may not mind, but it's not really intended for someone to park there and go do business at Smithfield Inn. It's meant for people to park at the station and do business at the station, charge while they do business. It's a much lower rate as well, but I can also, I can also attest that at one point, some time ago, I parked there and an employee that was working at the, at the power plant, the nuclear plant, was sitting in his car, charging his car there because it was the only location in any reasonable distance where he could charge at a reasonable rate. So unless you own your home and have in-home charging, it can be difficult. So our citizens that don't have in-home charging could use that resource, but I really see it primarily as a draw for tourists that are passing through the area to have that and then come into town, charge their car, have lunch, explore our shops, and contribute to our economy.
But it does serve as a small resource right now, and hopefully, when SHEETS comes, that they'll consider, you know, talking with their vendor and provide their service to us.
Yes, ma'am, I'm making the same approach to SHEETS as they've presented to the Planning Commission as well. And if neither one of those do, then I would, I would recommend that we work with marketing tourism to, if the Wawa comes to town, to try to get it there because while it appears like a small number, it's not really. And all those people, millions and millions of Americans that have them have to charge somewhere, and it's, and they often tour, tourists, where they charge. So it's a little different than a gas vehicle in that regard because you have to spend time charging, and you have to seek out a charger, so to speak.
Are we okay with passing this discussion on for a public hearing for Town Council? Thank you. So I guess we'll see you at the Town Council meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
C, pre-public hearing discussion, rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment, and future land use map amendment. Tammy?
Yes, thank you. Staff is requesting the rezoning of the property from heavy industrial to downtown, which is in line with the neighboring properties. The only proposed addition is a shed that would house the tourism golf cart. So this would be a conditional official zoning map amendment, a rezoning. It is currently being used for retail sales, which is a permissible, which is permissible in the downtown zoning district by right. It would be a comprehensive plan amendment for a future land use amendment because the lot lines making up these parcels were abandoned to create two parcels. The designation on the flume would also have to represent the new parcel shapes. The historic district downtown mixed use will still front on Main Street, and the historic district residential will still front on Cedar Street. This application was favorably recommended to Town Council by the Planning Commission, provided that it was one parcel with the flume designation of historic district downtown mixed use. Staff does not support that recommendation of the one parcel because we are currently functioning as landlords, and so if we do decide that we no longer wanted to be a landlord for that property, we would be able to dispose of it while still maintaining that second parcel that faces, that fronts on Cedar Street. Additionally, the way that the lease is written, we believe that by making it one parcel, we would now grant rights on that lease to the entire parcel instead of the intended front part of that building and parking. Thank you.
Discussion.
Chair, one of the, I'll share a few, some of our discussion from the Planning Commission if you'd like. So the one parcel, two parcel discussion, and the zoning assignment of residential and downtown mixed use, and the discussion that surrounded that with the Planning Commission. A primary driver of that discussion was if we were to zone, if we were split in two parcels, zone mixed use, we'll say in the front on Main Street, and then residential in the back along Cedar Street, then we as a town have said, this piece of land is designated for residential use, we do not build residential. So basically, we're saying this, this, we expect that this piece of land in the future will be a residential property. The discussion of the Planning Commission was that it's in the best interest of the town to retain that piece of property and zone it downtown mixed use to preserve the entire size, the entire parcel, front and back, if you will, as downtown mixed use to prevent any future speculation, if you will, say, a future council that in 10 years, or future Planning Commission looks at it and says, why are we hanging on to this residential piece of property when really, I think in the grand scheme of things, having it as downtown mixed use as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, seeing that we own the entire parcel, that its future may be, you know, of course, a myriad of options that it could be, but elements that were discussed were parking lots, town municipal buildings, and the like that could go on that, as well as discussions of expansion of the parking lot that's there, and upgrades that parking lot that have occurred, have occurred, and the ability to, if we do decide to split the parcel out, that we can, we can apportion that at any time to split the parcel. Not sure if we had any discussion in that meeting about how a lease would work out or how that would change the lease. about how a lease would work out, or how that would change the lease from its current terms, but I would also contend, without having discussed it with our legal team at all, that if we change the property and we change the lease, we can write the lease however we would like. I mean, I don't think that, it may interpret the current lease in that manner, but if we were to make this change and then decide that, well, we probably need to amend the lease at that point to reflect the leased use of the property and the amount of the property that they're leasing. And I don't think there's any problem with clarifying that in the lease. So, and even if we did split it into two parcels, we could still zone it downtown mixed use without zoning it residential. So, we have options here. We're not, you know, this is something we're proactively doing. It's not something we're doing reactionary. So, it's certainly worth more consideration and discussion and some time thinking about it for everyone.
I just want to clarify that the future land use map designation does not affect the by right use. It would be zoned, both parcels would be zoned downtown, which single family residential dwellings is a by right use, irregardless of what the future land use map designates the parcel as. So, even if it was designated as the historic district downtown mixed use, it is zoned downtown, which means there is a by right use for single family residential dwellings.
I agree with that. However, much like what we saw with the promontory, what we designate future use for, and then a builder or developer or what have you looks at that future land use map, that is the tool that they utilize to find property where they can build residential property on. So, while I understand the by right uses, if it all looks purple instead of blue, i.e. it all looks downtown mixed use instead of half and half residential, then it doesn't look as if the town is promoting it as a residential property in the future. That is, that was the discussion that we had amongst the members of the Planning Commission.
I kind of sort of tried to listen to the discussion on planning. It overwhelmed me, just like the conversation today. But I do have a question, Tammy. You said that the parcel that's fronting Main Street would be historic district downtown mixed use. However, the parcel that's fronting Cedar Street would be historic district residential. Why couldn't it all be defined as downtown mixed use?
It could. We did not want to change the future land use map. These were the designations that were already present for the property, but because the parcel lines changed, we lost the lines dividing the parcel. And so, we essentially created something new, but we left what Planning Commission and Town Council had approved in the comprehensive plan for those two parcels. It was designated as historic district residential in the comprehensive plan.
Did y'all discuss that, Darren? Or you wanted to change it to mixed use?
We did, yes, we discussed all the variety of options that it could be changed to, whether it was split, whether it was split as residential and mixed use, or all residential or all mixed use, one parcel, two parcels, and the variety of ways that it could be managed.
I just have a quick comment. See, I followed the discussion of the Planning Commission too, and it does seem disingenuous to keep it, the residential aspect, if our intention is never to use it for residential. I mean, we should, if it's downtown mixed use, then, which I understand, in theory, it could be single, you know, by right, they could have residential. But I think it sends the wrong message that it's designated residential. So, I think we keep it, I mean, the parcel to the, I mean, looking at the picture here, to the right is all downtown mixed use. It seems like that makes sense in the purple. It seems like we should just keep the whole thing purple.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Lambo.
I did not listen to the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know whether Council weighed in on it, or if he had any comments or whatever. If we're missing anything, I could ask Mr. McKenzie if he has any issues or what's been going back and forth as far as the discussion is concerned. Not that I don't inherently trust either one of my colleagues. I'd just like to know if our legal counsel has got any comment on this issue.
Mr. McKenzie, any feedback?
You, sorry, Councilman Lambo, would you like a report from the Planning Commission itself on the issue?
No, no, sir. The discussion's been going back before. Our Planning Director and Councilman Cutler, who's a representative on the Planning Commission, as far as what's legitimate use or the way, the direction or anything, is there, is there anything that I, or we have missed in this discussion that you can add to, or everything's?
No, I mean, you know, this is the pre-hearing. So, you know, my impression has always been that this is an opportunity for Town Council to get acclimated with the application before it comes up to you for a public hearing. I think you've raised some of the issues and some of the concerns about whether to keep this kind of split designated into the future land use map. And I think you're having productive discussion about it. And then ultimately, it's gonna, once it goes up for a public hearing, you can make those decisions about which way to go. I don't have anything to add.
In other words, no devil in the details.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yes, yes, sir. And I think that's, this is, it's an interesting issue. It's a unique piece of property you've got there. But I think the Planning Director has laid it out very clearly, and I think, you know, your representative from Planning Commission has recited some of the discussions that took place at Planning Commission level. So, to the extent that this is a pre-application, you know, orientation before the public hearing, I think that this, again, item has been fully agreed.
Thank you, sir. No surprise there at all. Thank you.
And Councilman Butler, if I may add one more element. So, I would recommend that the Council go back and read, or I'm sorry, go back and watch that 15 minutes or so dialogue exchange that we had. It was a lot of good discussion about, you know, kind of the thought process of the Planning Commission. I would also share that, just from a future land use map perspective, you know, I was recently approached by a builder who was investigating a lot because it's zoned residential in the historic district on the future land use map. So, that was a one-off, that was a first for me, but that was case in point of, you know, looking at individual lots to build houses and seeing it blue in this case, and saying, okay, there's somewhere I could build. And that's, I think that, from the Planning Commission perspective of trying to preserve that land for the future of the town, is the central reasoning of not making it a residential designation.
I'm more inclined.
The only thing I would add, as far as this discussion goes, and I think Ms. Claire already pointed out to it, but, you know, there can be issues, not amongst the Council or Planning Commission, but sometimes amongst the public, with conflating the future land use map and the zoning. And so, I think that it'll be important, both at the public hearing and, you know, with any prospective developers, to, you know, keep in mind two things. One, the future land use map is just a statement of intentions about what type of development you'd like to see in the various areas in the town, but it's the zoning designation, which in this case would be downtown, that really controls the uses. With that said, to the Councilman's point, you know, you are, you know, telegraphed into the development community, this is what we'd like to see there. And if residential is something, you know, historic district residential is something you'd like to see there, that's an appropriate designation. If it's not, it may not be something that you want to put out there. And it's not a legal issue. You aren't bound by the future land use map, but it's more a communication issue with the public to say, you know, you want to try to communicate as clearly as possible. Ask the President what type of development you'd like to see by utilizing the future land use map. And I think I'm just reciting what's already been said, but I thought I'd do it just to try to help out.
Tammy, do you think that we designated it as historic district residential, because that's what the adjacent properties are along there?
So, if I can assume, yes, because they were previous, if you scroll up to the original future land use map, you can see that there's five parcels that front on Cedar Street. If you notice the ones on the right side, that go the full length from Main Street to Cedar Street, they keep that historic district downtown mixed use. And it seems as though any of the parcels that fronted, that solely fronted on Cedar, were given that historic district residential designation.
The sheet metal business, that doesn't front Main Street, though, does it? That doesn't, the entrance is primarily from Cedar Street.
I see other members shaking their head yes, but I'm not.
I don't think, somebody that's worked here, I don't believe the sheet metal comes off Cedar Street. It does not front, it does not front Main. I can't remember what's there.
That property does front Main.
Does it front Main?
It's all one piece of property.
Is it?
It used to be a dealership, and it went from there all the way back to Cedar. There's just two different tenants in there.
But there's a building there. I mean, it's not, the sheet metal place is not, isn't it behind?
That's what I thought you was asking. Sheet metal business front Main Street. I thought that was.
I don't think so.
The building itself does. The sheet metal place does not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it does not face, but it's divided by another building. But I do believe it's all one piece of property.
That you may know. I was just talking about, from a police perspective, the businesses are not, yeah.
So, how could we protect the town's interests in that piece of land, that piece of property? Because I know that that was the discussion at the Planning Commission's meeting.
Well, ultimately, it would be up to Town Council if they wish to sell the property.
But if we didn't want it to be residential, is it in our interest to make it downtown mixed use?
Even if you designated it as a future land use map with that designation, it is still a by right use with the underlying downtown zoning district. So, they still would be able.
By right.
By right. And I'll defer to the attorney. We could potentially request a proffer statement that would prohibit it. However, that would then potentially devalue if, in the future, things changed. You would be limiting yourself.
We would be limiting ourselves as it's downtown mixed use?
I think what Ms. Claire is saying is that, in the, and this is when we have to kind of keep the lanes clear, but when we're looking at the zoning designation of downtown, my opinion is that residential is by right in that downtown zoning designation. So, going from the heavy industrial to the downtown, the rezoning piece of this application, if it's rezoned to downtown, then residential is still going to be a by right use. And what I hear, the question being is, well, if we don't want residential there, you know, we're rezoning it to a district that allows that use by right. And what I think Ms. Claire is saying is that, you know, in theory, when we have an applicant, you know, coming to the town, and there are uses in the district that that applicant is seeking and rezoning to, that the town is not interested in, or thinks would be, you know, problematic, well, a lot of times what the applicant will do will be to proffer out those uses, to say, so, you know, if we're, you know, up zoning to a heavy industrial area, you're gonna proffer out some of the noiseier uses or something like that to make the application stronger. So, here, the town, being both the applicant and the deciding authority, could theoretically proffer out residential, say, we want to move onto downtown, but we will submit as a proffer that we won't, that the property won't be used residentially. I think that's, that is legally possible, but, you know, any kind of limitation on uses, yeah, could impact the value of the property resale, but, you know, the trade-off there is, are you more concerned about maximizing the value of the property, or are you more concerned about, you know, focusing this as a commercial, a commercial parcel in the future, from a land use perspective?
Chair Lambo Butler, if I may, I think you said it, I think you said it better than the previous words that you said. The, this, so, the downtown zoning makes it residential by right, right? That's, we know that. The key point in the opinion of the, majority opinion of the Planning Commission was future land use map that says, here's what we want this property to be in the future, this body says, that's what we intend it to be in the future, says mixed use, because there has been, and there was a little discussion about that, there's no historical discussion of vacating that property by the town, and quite the contrary, the bulk of historical discussion for that property was future development by the town. Again, the effort of the Planning Commission was to say, make it downtown mixed use, not residential, for the effort and the effect of, if that property sits vacant, rented in its current state, and is zoned downtown mixed use, it is unlikely that any future council would be influenced by a developer that saw that piece of property as the Town Council's intention to develop it because it's designated residential. So, it's an effort to prevent, even though we may not, it may be a decade before we do anything with that property, there could be seven whole new members on this board in 10 years and looks at it and said, why, what are we sitting on this piece of residential property for? Of course, they could change it. But if they look at it and they say, oh, it's a piece of residential property, let's just sell it off and build a house. So, that's part of the thinking. The other part is the adjacent property. So, the dentist, the dental clinic next door is downtown mixed use, front to back. The adjacent property on the other side is only partial, you know, it's mixed use on the Main Street side, not on the remainder. So, it is kind of a conundrum right there on what to do with that piece of property if you only look at the adjacent. It's not consistent on Cedar Street, especially as you move towards Church Street. It becomes more, you know, you can see it, it becomes more mixed use area there. So, that's, that was the, that's probably the bulk of the details of the Planning Commission.
So, also, just to add to that, we can't have one parcel that's dual-zoned into two different future land use map categories. So, again, we were keeping the two parcels separate. If it's Town Council's desire to have the two parcels as the historic district downtown mixed use, Town Staff was not looking at that, as we were just trying to keep it in line with the future land use map. But if that is your desire, then, you know, we can designate them the same, even though they're two separate parcels.
That's actually what I was going to ask you. So, it is actually being divided up into two parcels. It was five parcels. Now, it's going to be two.
Correct.
And it's, I mean, roughly here with the different colors. Again, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Darren here. I think it should be one, since we're seeing it as a whole parcel. We don't, that future land use map, if we're saying it's designated as anything residential, that looks like we want residential there. We don't. We want that for town property, whatever we decide to do with it, whether it's a parking lot or a building, or whatever we decide to do. But I don't, I don't think that's our intention to put residential there.
Yeah, and I think it's the two decisions, okay? Two decisions. The first is, two parcels or one. And if, you know, if you look close, you can see it was five parcels. So, the question is not, and just to help you rephrase a little bit, the question is not, so, is it going to be two parcels? The question is, what does the Town Council want to do with it? Because we can do either. We can do one or two, and it's our prerogative. And we can do either downtown mixed use or residential. Again, it's our prerogative, so.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Hi. Tammy, you opened by sharing concerns on why it would be more difficult in terms of leasing and all those things if it was one. Could you roll that over again?
Correct. So, right now, we are in a signed lease agreement for that front half of the parcel. We are acting as landlords and maintaining that property. If Town Council decided that they no longer wanted to function as that landlord entity, we would then easily be able to we would then easily be able to, to sell that front half of that property while still maintaining that vacant lot at the rear. Um, that was part of our thought process. And again, um, because of that lease agreement, if we were to put in a parking lot structure, we wouldn't necessarily link it to that other structure that's part of that lease agreement, um, that's fronting on Main Street. We could then construct a, a parking structure that would enter off of Cedar Street.
But again, we currently have that parking behind Wind Pigs Fly Open as public parking. It's not only assigned and managed and, and maintained by Wind Pigs Fly, so while I acknowledge that fact, there's nothing that would ever stop us from splitting this parcel, single parcel into two in the future, so whether we do it now, or we do it then, it sends, it sends a message, whatever that message is that it sends, that it's one parcel or two, and that, you know, if it's two and it's zoned and it's designated differently, then maybe there's different intentions for them. If it's two and there's, and they're designated the same, then maybe we have intentions to view it and utilize it as two separate parcels. Um, I think we've, I've walked out there, I, I've walked across it as one piece of land, and I think that the most conservative manner of, of protecting this piece of property for the future is, is what I would recommend.
As one?
As, as one, yes, because if we, if we split, then we're saying, okay, we really want this to be two different pieces of property, right? Um, vice, if we came to a determination next year that we want to sell the road frontage and keep the piece in the back and turn it into a parking lot, well, again, that would be our prerogative and our capability to do it anytime because we own the entire parcel. Lease considerations are valid, but we write the lease. So if we want to write the lease that we utilize the whole parcel, or we allow utilization of the whole parcel, that's what we write, and we have our legal team write that contract with the, with the merchant. We already, like I said, we're already mixed use, if you will, using that property as a retail space and a public parking space. Uh, so I just think we, those pitfalls, even though they're, we retain ownership, whether we split it in two and how we designate it, those pitfalls of, that will be lost from this discussion in weeks and months and years, we should do, take the steps that we can to protect it.
Just one last comment, I know we don't vote today, we'll push it forward, but I think everything that Darren said makes sense, uh, particularly given some of the recent conversations we've had about town council's interest in that large, single parcel, so it would be my inclination and advice that we continue with the planning commission's recommendation as a one parcel, mixed use.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll move this forward to a public hearing at the next town council meeting. Uh, D is discussion item, short-term rentals.
Yes, thank you. Um, what we provided is a redlined version, this was based upon feedback that received with the recent, uh, short-term rental regulation. Um, we clarified the language in section one, um, so that it's clear that if you exceed 100 calendar nights per year, you do need a, a, an SUP. We also included item four, which is the historic preservation overlay. Um, this would allow a, a cap of not more than a certain number of approved, uh, SUPs for short-term, short-term rentals. Um, if council had a specific number in mind, um, that they would like to send this language back to planning commission, um, so that they can review it and work on it as well, we'd be happy to bring that to them. Thank you.
Are we having the first discussion on it?
Yes, that is correct.
Um, I, I guess my question to it is, I, I know that this has been a topic of discussion. Uh, are we looking to limit the number of short-term rentals? And if we are, are we having a percentage in the historic district as well as the town of Smithfield?
I see you looking at me.
Yeah, Jeff, yeah, cause you've been real vocal, yeah.
I haven't had any discussions whatsoever since our, since our last meeting, so nothing else has, has crept up. I haven't talked about a specific number, quite honestly, I haven't even thought about a specific number or a percentage, and whether that should apply only to historic district versus, um, other overlays that could be created. I haven't had any discussion whatsoever. I, I guess this is just being brought up, um, because of comments that have, you know, come forth. Um, but I guess, you know, the table's open, it's a committee meeting, you know, what, what do you guys think? Should we look at this? Do we need to look at this?
It's real interesting, I had somebody, and, and I know that, uh, we had a group that went down to Edenton, North Carolina. Uh, I, I've never been to Edenton before, but I was curious to know, wonder why did we go? Uh, and I, somebody mentioned that the main reason for the meeting was to look at their waterfront and how they developed it. Um, but that person also shared with me, I know that Edenton is a smaller town than us, population size and probably, uh, square miles, but they have 100 short-term rentals. And I was just wondering, from y'all's trip there, did, did that come up in conversation? Or did they have anything to say, uh, positive or negative about short-term rentals?
We never really discussed that-
Okay.
-when we were down there. We discussed the water, and they are, they're big on getting federal funding to help buy properties in the town.
That's interesting.
That they, you know, they, um, actually repurposed them. There's an old hotel there, I think.
Cause the reasons, the, the reason I asked that is, the comparison that we did, to me, are not comparable to Smithfield. You know, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Portsmouth, or whatever, I, I just, I think that in order for us to do our research, we probably should research a town similar to us, just to get some feedback on it, or how they handle it, or, you know, what is our premise on short-term rentals as far as, do we want a certain percentage of our households? Or do we just want to say a flat number of short-term rentals?
And is it only going to be in the downtown or-
Yeah.
-other places?
Valerie, if I may, it was Jeff's, somebody's, um, in our walk around Edenton, I fell back and I forget what the young man's title was, he was sort of like the development guy for downtown.
He was the town manager, oh, that's right, he was the one.
No, the young, yeah.
That's right, yes.
And he shared that, um, but they're hearing a lot of both pro and con, sort of some of the things that Jeff had, had brought up. They'd like to have the fact that there are places for people to stay when they come down and visit, as we hear often, uh, but also the same complaints about too many cars and people parking and residential. And I think, to your point, might want to have one of those guys come talk to us, or, you know, do a little research, because one of the things that has happened there that sort of has changed according to this, well, their, their sense of yay or nay, an old hotel has been repurposed. The first couple floors are rentals, and then the top is sort of Airbnb. So now they think maybe, in hindsight, they have given too many Airbnb in the actual historic residential area. So I agree with you, comparing this to Virginia Beach may not be the right thing, so maybe we could look at that, and again, like Jeff said, I haven't considered a number or a percentage, uh, either. I'll say what I've said several times in the historic district, for me, if it's in the, an area that's already residential, commercial, I mean, problem. If it's in a neighborhood, that's something that, um, I'm going to have to look really hard at before I would endorse that.
Madam Chair, my, my, my concerns fall back, I guess, to the, a couple of things, both from an aesthetic perspective, and short-term rentals, I know they have their purpose, and, and I know that they can be good for a community, but my concern is twofold. Number one, as I discussed earlier, continuity of community is very, very important to me, and when you have short-term rental, that the tenants may tend to change every 104 days or whatever, or whatever, um, I, I worry about the continuity of community as far as maintenance and things, and of course, we, we don't want any more work for zoning and codes compliance staff to do. The other thing is, if I recall correctly, Virginia Beach was having a significant problem with short-term rentals as far as public safety was concerned. Um, the rise in the number of calls for service, and I'm not saying that Edenton or anybody else does that, but I would really like to see the statistics as far as the demographic is concerned, as far as calls for service and things like that in short-term rentals, versus community homes that have been well-established. Don't get me wrong, we get calls for service for there as well, but at the same time, I, I just like the approach that you move into a home, especially, it's a first-time home buyer, and you're in real estate, I'm not. I don't know if you've got a first, if you've got a, a, a short-term rental, um, what that does as far as property values, um, as, for potential housing is concerned, or it then again, potentially takes away, um, the opportunity for a first-time home buyer. I'm just worried about these other metrics that fall into play before we go and say, yep, we're allowed to have 19 homes that are first, that are, are, are short-term rentals in X district for whatever, so that the decision is not just a, just an arbitrary decision where we throw a number out, and somebody use the term, throw a spaghetti against, well, see if it sticks. I think we really need to do some significant homework before we go down this path, and I would rather err on the side of caution than I would err on the side of, uh, more open approach that may make some happy, but may make some miserable. I'll just leave it at that.
Darren?
Yes, Chairwoman Butler, if I may, share a couple of thoughts as well. Uh, oh, actually, the first, the question, that, do we, are we aware of any feedback from citizens for the most recent comprehensive plan, uh, addition? Was there any feedback from citizens, yes or no, positives, negatives on short-term rentals that we're aware of?
I don't know that, that we addressed that during our comprehensive plan update.
I think it, um, I don't know if it's in the county study that was recently released either, but I think we should look at that and see if there's any mention of it, because much of the feedback from the county is actually from town residents as well.
I, I will tell you that, I, I do know that the county, county, maybe it was last year, uh, they did do an update or an amendment on their short-term rentals.
So maybe the county has some data that they could share with us, that, that we could request. Um, Ms. Clary, if we could ask town manager to see if they have any, if they collected any data for their decision. I would also ask our attorneys, you represent multiple localities throughout the state of Virginia, can you share their ordinances with us? Can you share their experiences with us? Or whatever you can share, if you could collect that, and not, not to put you on the spot tonight, tonight, but whatever you, resources you can provide to us, please do.
Yes, we're, we're happy to do that.
Great.
Mr. Clary.
And then the Edenton point, someone coming and giving us a firsthand experience. Um, but what I would say is, my short time, we've witnessed two of these come through so far, and I think I saw another one as a, as a citizen, and what we frequently see is, this sounds like a good idea, right? It sounds, it sounds great, but the piece, the person that comes and speaks against it is the neighbor that has to live there. And I think the, you know, a key question to ask, and, um, unfortunately, we're mildly represented as, as the entire community town here, but, you know, if, if somebody applied for one that was your immediate next-door neighbor, would you support it? You know, would you be happy with it? Um, and in that vein, that we seek to begin at least, if we're going to make a policy that is, is substantial, that we begin with a restrictive, conservative policy, and then if we see our need to change that grows, then we have the ability to do that, as opposed to starting with a, with a liberal policy that then we have to make corrections to, like Edenton, sounds like had needed or has to do. So if we start, um, start low, but I, I think that there, there is a place for it, and, you know, one of the, and it, it may be able to be codified because, um, you know, as we look at what we have, you know, as a policy, it's, you know, the draft or what have you, where we, it currently exists, it's, it's pretty short, so, um, a different resource that we have, a little different from tourism and our short-term residents, but we have these kind of middle-term residents that seem to be, uh, having a necessity for work at the power plant that's year-round, and comes into town and spends a lot of money. So maybe we could whittle out an area for that, you know, those are people that are staying three to six months and contributing to our economy in, in probably a really great way, because they've probably eaten out a lot, and, you know, uh, shopping at our stores that are in town and whatnot. So there may be a place for that, I would just like to mention that. A short-term rental that's not, you know, well, let's call it a, a medium-term rental, right? There may be a special carve-out for that as well.
If I may elaborate on the data provided by Michael Stallings, um, eight of the towns that he surveyed did not have any sort of limit on their short-term rentals.
No, you're saying no limit?
Correct.
Thank you.
And also, Tammy, if you could clarify, um, to Mr. Cutler's point, sort of a, a medium rental option, these short-term rentals are, are really, um, for leases that are less than 30 days.
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, if we had places that people could rent for 60 days, or 180 days, you know, 90 days, that, that doesn't even, that doesn't even fit into this category, that's a complete, so.
Correct. And again, we only have four SUPs for short-term rentals, we don't have any prospects, we don't have any applications, we don't have any inquiries into this at this moment.
But we know of another five in the historic district that are the 104 days or less.
Right. That's the thing, I think a lot of people, uh, a lot, there are a number of people that use their homes, or they have a home, they just don't use it for the greater than 104 days. So there are a lot of options for a short-term rental, even though they're not technically a short-term rental, because they're less than the 104 days. I mean, if I choose to rent out my home for one weekend a month, that, you know, that's only 24 days, so I mean, I got a long way to go. If I'm going to do every weekend, that's obviously where that 104 comes from, but...
Well, is, is it worth sending this to the planning commission for them just to talk about it, to, to get another set of eyes on it? I mean, we, we talk about it quite a bit here.
The planning commission has already drafted their short-term ordinance, it, council seems to want to see something different. I'm sure they would appreciate guidance from council as to what you're looking for, um, just so that they're not spinning their wheels trying to create something that they, they don't fully understand what you want to approve.
So the mark-throughs is what planning sent to us?
That is staff.
Staff sent this to-
That is what staff sent, just from, um, our feel of, of how the conversations went in regards to that previous application on Sykes Court.
Was planning agreeable with this?
They have not seen this, we did not want to bring it to them until we got some further direction from council-
Okay.
-on, on what you all would like to see.
Tammy, let me just be sure, there's no hurry, right? We have plenty of time to consider and investigate and do all those things before we make any adjustments, correct?
Yes, sir, we were just following up, um, with the concerns that we heard, uh, with something that we draft, that we thought it was a direction that council wanted to go.
Um, my concern with that is, if we should get a request before we finalize this, I hope that is our intention not to delay a request that comes to us because we're not sure where we are. And I, and I felt like that that's what happened with the last situation that we had. We kind of delayed a decision until we had this discussion, and we could have gone on and made a decision about that short-term rental request. So I hope it doesn't hamper any new request that we get, that I hope that our decision is based on face value, whatever that decision, whatever that request is. So it sounds like- So it sounds like we will decide what we want?
It can appear on committees next month.
And then send it to planning for their feedback on it?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess we'll have further discussion about it. You know, I like the idea that Vice Mayor Harris mentioned, to have somebody to come in and talk to us about it, that's in a smaller historic district like we are, just to get some pros and cons, what they've done, and, you know, what, how they handle short-term rentals. I don't know if that's possible.
Well, the other side of that is, in all due respect, is that you may want to get somebody from a homeowners association, too, that lives in an area that's got a number of, of short-term rentals and see what their experience is as well with short-term rentals.
The HOAs would dictate whether or not they allow...
They've got a mixture of some type in Sandbridge. That's where I'm picking it up from, where some folks are having significant problems down there. Now, keep in mind, we're not in the same venue, the same type of attraction that Sandbridge is with the...
Because that's kind of seasonal.
Well, I, I'm just saying that, you know, there was, where I used to work, when you wanted to build something or did this, do that, you would have to get a, a sign-off from the adjacent property owner, whether they approved or didn't approve of it. And if they didn't approve of it, then it would come to the commission, and then the commission would hear the matter, whatever. But significant weight was given to what the adjacent property owner had to say about what went in beside their, their house that they lived in for 25 and 30 years. That's my, that's my concern.
Well, and that, that makes sense to me, though. I'd be curious to know our communities like Cypress Creek, Wellington Estates, there are two that I do know that have HOAs, to see what their reception of it is. And I would think that the HOAs would dictate what's in their community. Yeah. We'll move this to our next committee meetings. Hopefully, in, you know, during that time, you know, we could have done a little research, and hopefully, you and Michael, to kind of help us make this decision.
Yes, because I would specifically like, if all, if possible, any type of statistics that you get from, let's just say, Edenton, Ben Down there, I'd like to hear what's going on there as far as the, the sense of public safety is concerned.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that's the last thing on public buildings and welfare. I'd like to close my committee.
There was one more item.
Is it? I'm sorry, it is?
It's okay, it's not mine, so it's okay.
It says, it says E, so I think it's yours.
I'm sorry, it is. I thought it meant a closed meeting. Eed is a discussion item on closed-session minutes. I know that we've had a lot of conversation about how we will take minutes or recording in a closed-session meeting, so it's open for discussion.
Ms. Butler, I would like to, you know, with Michael not being here, I think he needs to weigh in on some of this, because he's there in closed sessions all the time. And I hate to us be talking about this and then wait for him to come back and discuss this again, because I think it's, wouldn't be fair to him to not to, for him to be not present at this time to further, to discuss.
Michael?
Yes, Michael.
I agree with the mayor.
Okay.
So I'd like to delay that until the next committee meeting, so we can have more time to think about this.
Okay.
And, and in the interim, Mr. Mayor, if we could, and I'm sure our council is, is really up on this, but making sure that we're good to go as far as what other localities and with the state law and everything, so that when we, maybe even when we turn before we have our discussion, we can get a briefing from, from legal counsel as far as what the law of the Commonwealth of Virginia says. I think that's the, the template we're going to ultimately have to use in our decision-making process. So if Mr. McKenzie or one of his associates can be ready to let us know what we can and cannot do before we discuss it, I think is a prudent way to go. If it pleased, if it pleased the council.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Councilwoman Butler and Mr. Mayor, if I may add on to that task as well, there was much discussion about taking minutes and some allusions by the council that closed session is an opportunity for us to kick back in our chairs and talk, because we're not being on the camera. And I, our attorney, I think, was remiss in correcting that, so I would like to invite them in that next session to discuss the intent of the Freedom of Information Act law, which is not to give us an opportunity to speak casually. It, it is very specific, and the impairments of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy. It is very specific. Any exemption from public access to records or meetings shall be narrowly construed. This chapter shall not be construed to discourage free discussion by government officials or employees of public matters. So nowhere, I, I read through it, and I didn't see anywhere in there where it said, this is intended to allow casual conversation. It's intended to protect our locality from things that can damage it that we need to discuss behind closed doors. This is kind of a broad interpretation of, of how I read it, but I would welcome our attorneys to provide a legal presentation of what the true framework and intention of the Freedom of Information Act is entitled, is intended to do for our citizens, if they could do that in that, in our next discussion of this as well. Thank you.
I got a question, Darren. When you said casual conversation, what do you mean by that? Do you feel that we've had some closed sessions that were casual conversations?
No, but I, I feel in our open-session discussion of the, of closed-session minutes previously, it was stated in the, in that meeting that the intention of closed session was so we could have casual conversation. And that's, that's really just not the case. And even the, the legal team, you know, made some allusions to that as well, if I'm not mistaken. And I would like them to, to brief us on what the purpose is as they make those determinations of what other localities are doing. But that has nothing to do with what the purpose of the Freedom of Information Act is, which is not to give, it's, it's to protect the locality. I can cite, and I will, I'm prepared to do it now, I'll be prepared to do it at the next meeting, but I can cite, I can cite a number of mistakes that we've had, or a number of situations since we've been taking minutes where it would have, or potentially could, could save us a lot of trouble or headache. And in the absence of those, we could, we would never have been able to resolve those issues.
Which is why I asked for a composite report from the council. I'd like for them to give us, from A to Z, the good, the bad, the indifferent, as we sit around the table and discuss this very important matter. I, I don't, I didn't put any conditions or any constraints whatsoever on council, nor would I ever do that. I expect Mr. McKenzie or his partner to come here readily briefed, to give us a thorough discussion on FOIA, the, the, the council, whatever, and whatever appropriate statutes apply. I don't, I don't recall this group ever alluding to the fact that you could have a casual discussion about the people's business. I don't recall that.
We're happy to do that. We will, we will come fully briefed to, to discuss the application of the Freedom of Information Act on closed meeting, of how it works, what the restrictions are, what the policy intent is behind it. I'm more than happy to do that. One other thing I wanted to add in, in discussing this with the town manager, is once, once that the town council has received that briefing, how you want to put it into effect. And one thing that we were discussing that I would just like to, to put out there now for your consideration for the next time, is whether you'd like us to develop some kind of rules of order for town council. That can be for the entirety of the meeting, regular meetings, work sessions, and closed sessions. You can have them just for closed sessions. But my concern is, right now, there are no standing rules of order for town council. And that, if, if you did want to put into effect any kind of strictures or protocols about how town council meetings are to be run, or a, a center rules of order, sometimes the purchase bylaws, would be a good place to do that. So we have not started that work. We will only do it if you instruct us to do it, but that is one thing to consider, if, if that's something the town council would be interested in pursuing. And we can incorporate that into our briefing next time.
Yeah, and I think if you speak with the town manager about it, he has a draft, it's a, it's very brief, but he has a draft procedure that he had already developed, so...
Yeah, I, I think, I talked to Cutler, his draft, and again, we, he did that, we didn't do that, we're happy to help with it. But I think it was proposed meeting specifically, and that's just fine, but, but in discussions, we had said, well, you know, if, if we're looking at this issue, and this is just administrative, you know, procedure, you know, how do we, do we have something for town council? And frankly, you know, I don't mind saying, if coming in as a new attorney, the interim town attorney, that was one of my first questions, was coming into a town council meeting, is are, are there rules of order, so I know what the, you know, how, how the meeting is run? And there weren't any. And it, and it may just be something to consider as we're talking about these types of procedural frameworks, which is right for closed session. It's just maybe a good catalyst for that, especially broadly. And those, those are, those types of things are just for town council's benefit. It's just to put out there and say, this is, you know, the mayor running the meetings, this is how we run our meetings. But they can also help as a, to Mr. Cutler's point, I think, to help with transparency. Say, hey, you know, but these are the rules of the road, you know, ahead of time. Even if you're not from here, you don't come to these meetings a lot, you can pull them down online, you can see, you know, what the meeting's going to look like. And that's, that is just an option that, that I'm putting before the, the town council. It's not something that you have to do, you know, it's required to happen, but as, as we're having this discussion, I wanted to throw it out there now, so that you can mull it over, and when we come into the briefing at the regular meeting, you can say, you know, I've thought about a rules of order, and hear, hear my comments on it. So I just, I, I told the town manager that I would raise it now, kind of put it on your radar, and you can discuss it in particular after I've delivered my briefing about the strictures of FOIA and closed session.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Mr. McKenzie, art, under the town charter, we're directed to operate under the rules of the House of Delegates. How, how would that play into what you're offering us, or would it mirror and not, of course, abrogate, or, or do anything to, to, to run afoul of that? So I guess you could come up with something that would, that would consider the spirit and the, and the letter of that, and at the same time, give us even a little bit better guardrails?
Yes, Ms. Clary, I, I would put that briefly, and the town charter provision, and like a lot of charter provisions, I, I believe what that's saying is, in the absence of any other direction, this is our baseline. The, and, and so, but it, it, I think it gives deference to specifically adopted, locally adopted rules of order. So I think you could supplement that baseline with your own rules of order, and if they were adopted by town council. And, and, you know, other, other jurisdictions will use Robert's Rules as their baseline. But either way, it's saying, well, if we don't have a, a adopted rules of order on a, on a subject, this is what we default to. And your charter controls that. But I think your charter gives, gives the town the ability to adopt a local, specific set of rules of order if you choose to do so. If not, you just use the default rules that are established by your charter. And either way's fine, I just, but we, I've used part of my job, setting out a menu of options for you to choose from, and that's just one of them.
Thank you.
Well, Steve, I thought some, we've kind of sort of had this conversation before, and the town invested in giving us Robert's Rules of Orders books.
When I came on, that's exactly what we did utilize. We used Robert's Rules of Order, and then I ordered the books and provided y'all with the Robert's Rules of Order for, for the specific, you know?
Mr. McKenzie, I like this suggestion or the idea of you providing a framework for our meetings and closed sessions, because personally, I'm not really feeling comfortable with either right now. So it'll be nice if you can provide us that information.
Ma'am?
If I could just add one more thing from the statute, it, it does say, minutes may be taken during closed meetings of a public body, but shall not be required. But the catch there is, such minutes shall not be subject to mandatory public disclosures. So they are closed-session minutes that are retained as such. They're not subject to public disclosure.
And I think we had talked about that. Any more discussion? If not, you know, we'll have further discussion hopefully at our next committee meetings. If there's no other, no other questions, I think my meeting is closed now.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just from a public safety perspective, they have issued a coastal flood warning once again for the town of Smithfield.
I know, I'll be, I'll have waterfront and rear tonight.
Yes, sir.
Meeting, meeting adjourned. She, she closed her session, so.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.